Dave, that's just not right.
You know what? I gotta tell you that this background is funny. I had to give a talk the other night in Indonesia, so I put a background in there from Indonesia.
The consulting process for ready one thirties that many for right away. This is all going to letting twenty twenty four. So all I need, everything's done. All I need is the signatures. Right away. And then the last two pages, I got those side ones on being just our face. It's for the end of every thing we know. Just in case. Usually you have.
Thank you. Then we have. The jail lock discussion slash vehicles.
This might be half our discussion. I haven't decided to do it. Sure, it's not getting years ago, Bill. Talking about.
Yes, on the jail locks, believe the council approved the money for purchase of those locks.
Hey, Jack, and that's nothing not for a lot. That rate.
Emotional proof that so much. Stay in all favor. Then what's on the vehicles?
Asking for two spot cars, looking at the ramp pickup trucks that would repurpose in the county if they needed for maintenance or whatever. Unfortunately. With this model here, they quit, they cut take orders back in February, so I'm unable to purchase those at this time, and they're not going to reintroduce a pickup truck until twenty four, twenty five, it sounds like. So I'm gonna ask for two dogs, Strangos. Price wise, it just depends on which slot you find them on. Like there's two of them on his sport right now for thirty eight thousand. If you order them, you can get them like thirty or forty. Also, we'd like to ask for a five thousand dollar allowance for equipment such as lights, uh, switch panels and stuff like that for two vehicles.
Cause obviously you would replace.
Yes.
Two of the older units, but those switches and stuff.
Though the part we could save money on is like the radios, you can reuse the radios, the radar, and like the radio would save you three thousand dollars. The radar would save you quite a bit of money as well. We got two vehicles with two hundred thousand miles. We have five with rebuilt titles. We'd like to get one of those high mileage vehicles off the road. Also, we'd like to, if possible, get a one of those rebuild title vehicles off the road, let like an administrator drive it where the liability is off the county, where patrolmen were pod riding around. Something may not be safe.
We'll need to see quotes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to get at least three, well, three quotes to compare.
Sure.
Pair it, but. Next meeting if I'm gonna have those.
Or whenever those orders open up, the ones you want.
Yeah, Ford, I can't get quotes on until October because that's when they cut the numbers. Other than that, I can reach out to Chevy or Tahoe. It's gonna be.
More than.
More than the Durango's, but.
Yeah, I think it'd be a little bit nicer. I have the trucks. I mean, this.
Depending on what they're replacing. Just don't need to be able to transport people.
What's that? You need to still have enough vehicles in your fleet to transport people if need be.
Correct.
So.
I just.
When you quote. Just to approve. You can't approve anything if there's no quotes. Right, for next meeting, yeah.
Sure. But that's all I got.
And I know you're mentioning an auction to them, so can you see what you have and share some of the need to.
Yeah, so a couple titles we try to get. I mean, a pile of list and stuff that were.
You have.
Yeah, there's at least five things I believe that we can auction off.
That bring all the.
Okay. Now this next meeting, just of course. So you got.
Thanks.
And Bernard, here.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um. As you all know, the second floor of the courthouse hasn't been touched since I don't know when. I did a walkthrough with Mr. Rudy Yachum today. Our second district congressman, he come to visit everybody in the annex as well as the courthouse. And as he was leaving my office, he asked me if I was. Planning on having fun with paint anytime soon. So to me, that was not a good. Impression to make on our, uh, he knows congressman, so I would, you know, you redid the courtroom. Um, a couple of times. I don't think my office has been touched for. Since the sixties, just look at the paint. I got pipes hanging in the ceiling and, you know, carpet that's that runs all the way across it, so. I, you know, even if it's just paint and new flooring, um, I got no slits in that carpet and my girls breathe it every day. Um, they've already made comments about allergies. I don't want it to go any further than that. I want it to stop that comments. I don't want.
Sorry, sorry, go over to your office.
Uh, basically.
Or just your office.
Well.
Your office.
The small claims and the four D offices with the prosecutor, so that's kind of up to the prosecutor and the small claims is kind of up with the judge has. Even though the small.
But I've got new furniture.
The prosecutor office can get redone with the.
The forty.
Mind you, your office.
Yeah, my, uh, the clerk's office has never been touched and the clerk's office is the most highly, um, trafficked office in the courthouse, so. You know, it's what everybody sees. It's the impression everybody leaves with, and I want them to leave with a much better impression than what I had to do today, so. Um, is there anything I can do to get this ball moving faster? I'm willing to do whatever. You know, my girls have even said that they're willing to come in on Saturdays with paint and I know that's, I, I, this is where we're at, guys. It really is. So, you know what, Rick?
I would like to see quote.
Yeah.
Okay, is that me, you? Is.
Coordinate it, right?
So, okay, what are you wanting him to go quotes on specifically?
Well, I think one of them just paint, you know, the work that she wants done. I mean.
How much of it, how much of remodel do you want?
Well. It depends. Let's look into the future a little bit. We all know the situation with city court. Am I going to house them one day? If I have to house them one day, do you guys want to make plans now or do you want to wait until it happens? It's all but, you know, it, I'm gone out of that office in three and a half years, so, you know, I. I won't have to deal with that if I have to incorporate that into the clerk's office. But how far ahead do you guys want to look? Maybe you want to be proactive or reactive when that happens, since, you know. We can get very extravagant, you know, all you guys need to also think about, you have to find a place to house election equipment. Our election cases are getting much larger and they'll be delivered this year and they always have to be secure. So we have that to worry about too.
Feel like if we're gonna do work to it, it makes sense to go a little bit beyond.
To some, yeah, something that'll last at least as long as what, you know, the existing. You know, read more recent regulations on the first and third floors were intended to last.
You know.
The conference room? Yeah, it's the conference room. We use that for early. Yes, yes. Um. Election equipment, um, you know, the books, we have had the scanning project going on. Um, I just got word today that all my marriage license are now uploaded into Fiddler. But is it searchable yet? No, because we are indexing them because I can't have. The county pay a dollar per image for them to index that, you know, we're talking thousands and thousands of documents here. So we are going to index them, but I still have to keep the books until we get these thousands and thousands of documents. Uh. Put in a searchable format.
Whatever, get up there and try to give your ideal. Even my deal and come back.
Biggest thing is some paint, some new flooring, no carpet, please. Let's go with hardwood floors or laminate or tile. Something hard so we don't have the dust and the issues that we're having now and maybe some surling, ceiling fans for circulation. And something to think about if we're not going to upgrade the central air. Uh, and.
What I wanted to get. I wanted to tie this into that project to get it all done.
The summer heads, if it's not done, I'm gonna need another window air conditioner for the west wing because.
Take care of before even your remodeling.
Okay.
Soon it were in the process of working on.
Okay, that, well, then as, as long as it gets done before it gets hot because the where the. The office where the majority of my girls are at, so I can go all summer without an air conditioner over there for them, they would.
There was.
Not be happy.
There were, there was a week last month, you can very good to know.
Right, there's been a.
Yeah, it gets very warm in there, but. You know. I, ceiling fans, plant paint and four, I would be happy with, but I would like the lower ceiling to hide all that piping in there. That would be nice, so you don't see it in there and, you know, there's conduit running on the outside of the walls. Yes, it's painted over. It's not quite as noticeable, but. Still, come on, we're supposed to be a professional office. I would like for it to at least look somewhat professional.
I'll definitely give it Rick and kind of give him your thoughts and he can bring all that to us.
I'll try to get up there in a week or so too.
Okay, just a question.
Don't wait on me. Go ahead and get started.
Okay, is there anything that you guys just want in your clerk's office that I need to start working with or thinking about?
Like you, as long as we're good for the future, you know, not just, but well, for today.
We want to make sure your needs, needs are met and then whatever future needs you can anticipate for a potential success or.
Okay.
I just had a question, just, um, this was just raised to me. Is, oh, is the building is so old, are there any sort of like historical building kinds of regulations that need to be followed?
It's, as, it's a historical building and I think there is certain things you have to follow, which that's we'll have to find out and.
I don't have any architectural pieces on walls or on the ceiling or door frames or anything like that to worry about. I'm not.
Well, when we, when we restored. The bell tower and the clock tower, the lady of the, of the courthouse was painted over. Please don't, you know, we're, you know, that's about twenty thousand. But, but there was, there were certain criteria we had to do now whether this project.
Well, if you see the sponge paint that's in my office now, anything better than the sponge paint that I have on my.
What little I know, those are the sort of things that's more focused on not changing the outward appearance of the building. I rarely is there other things on the inside. You know, we worry about preservation lines because most of what we change is mechanical or functional. Shouldn't be too much of a stumbling block, but it is something we'll have to be mindful of when we make plans.
Yeah.
Thanks. So much help for you. And there's no election tomorrow.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
We got, uh, Director Brock.
Need to ask for thirteen thousand dollars to repair or to replace the furnace at the North Jackson Station. As of Thursday, it went down, um, different unit, it is twenty years old. It's been there since the building's been built. So there's no parts available all the time. Freon's not available for it, so twenty years with the, uh, furnace we got. So thirty eight hundred, um, Jackson's will use the pre-existing, um, ventilation system there and just sell us the parts for that.
Well, the outside, the. Minutes or the. For the AC, is that.
It's all in that one, one unit. Yeah, they're replacing the whole thing. Yeah, I looked at that.
Glad we take care of both.
Yeah. Yeah.
You said that freon location is, that's a little.
Oh, yes. At one twenty two or something. Yeah.
Like most of them go with it. What's suddenly going to pull? Say motion.
Yep, second, all in favor.
Right, thank you, Charlie.
Could I have our director address something? The other night I went up to Coons Lake to speak with, uh, some of the fire departments. Medic five is closed now, is that correct?
No, it's not.
Okay, but I walked up to it and it said this is a private, private residency, um. I think it basically said that, don't come knocking because this is my house. What's the story there, Larry?
I'm not sure. That was there before I was here.
We need to address that. That's, that was.
That sounds like something that was done in response to the.
Second amendment auditor.
For the. First Amendment audits.
Yeah, first.
Um, just like we've got, we've had to post signs in certain areas in this building in the courthouse.
And.
Because. Well, that's not surprising. I mean, this. Um, but yeah, I think that was, that signs up there as a response to.
Did we check on that? Because I'll tell you, that's, that's a little, uh, it really is a little concerning that you go to a. County owned building and it says a private residency. Uh, and that they're not to be bothered.
That's, yeah, that, but that particular, if that's the particular wording on that, that would, that's an odd way to word it.
Yeah, right. I'll look into it.
But.
Yeah, I seen it one time and I, it was that time of the, uh, mock disaster. So I thought maybe it was for that.
It could have been left over from that too.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just, this is all just speculation on my part, so I don't really.
Yeah, I can look into it and remove it if needed. I'll run to the next meeting, look and decide what.
Okay.
So, I didn't issue.
How are we doing? I've had, uh. A lot of concerns when it comes to getting people from the hospital to where they need to go. How are we doing on our staffing now?
Uh, staffing looks good. Our May schedule has just, uh, came out and I'm happy to say it is full. We are wonderful schedule, so no openings looks real good.
So we've got. Uh. No problems with the gaps in the, in the, or we've got it sorted for, to get paramedics where they need to be.
Uh, we are still doing one paramedic in the community. And that's because of the funding and the cost of a paramedic right now. So, um, we talked about that before, um, the money that was needed to raise the rates.
So you're not doing possible transfers.
Yeah, we do emergency hospital trainers only. If the helicopter don't fly, we will do them. So that is to guarantee that we have the nine one one coverage around the area.
So you can't do a transfer without a medic.
No, some transfers can go basic line support with an E and T.
Correct.
So, um, with these emergency transfers, if the helicopter don't fly, um, sometimes they'll send a nurse with us. The problem with the hospitals, they can't guarantee that.
Right.
So that's where we get into. They have staffing problems. We have staffing problems.
Okay.
So we prefer them to send a nurse. However, if they can't, we'll send our own paramedic in town on that trip. And those will go to like, um. Vapple, the surrounding area, Vapple, Laporte, South Bend, Fort Wayne. Cause we want them back in the community as fast as we can get them. So remember, we're taking a nine one one truck out to do that emergency. So, and this is where. Helicopter won't fly. They can't get Tri-County to come over or anybody else in the area. So then they call us and say, hey, can you do it? And we do it. Our biggest problem is staffing. That's why we keep running into the issue with staffing issue. Um.
It's killing us budget wise for overtime.
I know, um. You guys got suggestions? I'm interested in those. They get a paramedic first time inside. So.
Alright, so for now, that's all I've got for now. So.
Alright, thank you.
Stick around though, there may be more questions later. We have, uh, Sharon's up next.
I'm coming for you today. Uh, I have done some research into this and I think that our county would be. A good, this would be a good asset for our county is a safe haven baby box. I don't know if you've heard about that on the news or not, um, how they are at volunteer fire departments or sometimes hospitals. And I am coming to request for funding for that. Um, I have included packets. Just concerning what it's about, how you go about it, um. Where you would install it. Our closest counties that actually have it, I have that in the letter. Um, it's like Warsaw, Plymouth is the closest and that's already twenty five miles away. Uh, Logan's Port, Monticello, Hammond. This is something where young mothers as a last resort. Would give up their babies instead of abandoning them. And it would be an asset for our community and for the child.
This isn't the first time one of these has been proposed, isn't it? I think I remember hearing someone talking about getting one of these years ago, but I don't remember why we didn't.
And it would be installed at California Township. We are within the responding, um. Paramedics or first responders to get, once the alarm goes off, the baby is placed in there. And we're also within the range of the hospital. Everything will be certified and tested as the installation goes along by Safe Haven Baby Box. And they will also do the training for our first responders and our fire department.
So this is a request for eighteen thousand?
Correct. It covers the installation, it would cover the, um, initial purchase fee for the box. And the electrical and the alarm book up because it does have to go with the nine one ones or dispatch.
And that's too, uh, this is, I take it this is too much of a burden for the township to bear?
We would pay the yearly recertification fee and the monthly alarm fee.
That's. Three hundred dollars annually?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that make those liable for the babies then? I mean, somebody.
That I'm not sure. I would have to, I mean, this is all information that I received from the company. And from when I went to Plymouth, I did, there are pictures at the back of it, I believe, that I took. Um, when I went up to visit and see what their baby box looked like, she did not tell me any fail health liability. And this would be all anonymous. As far as.
Here it is online too, she might know.
Okay.
Carrie Block, would you know on that?
Um, I don't know specifically the answer to that question, but I would be happy to reach out to Bliss McKnight and see if they have any, um. Procedures or, um, advice policy on that that we could implement.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yep, I can do that for sure.
Carrie, what's the responding agency on?
I see there's grants out there too. Right, the last one's one billion dollars. Don't name Indiana Community Foundation.
Grant.
They gave ten thousand dollars, Fulton County for one.
Just responding agency. I'm guessing when it's open like an alarm is triggered of some sort. Is it possible?
Right, once they put the baby inside and they close that door, there is an alarm that goes off. That's the first alarm.
And who gets alerted when that?
It would be nine one one and then it would be our responders. But our responders would be tied into that nine one one, so they would get it right away too.
Where were the, this may be an unfair question, I mean. First responder answers, they transport baby to the hospital to.
Right.
So you're talking about, you know, chain of liability. We're talking about, not to talk about a person like it's property, but you're talking about who takes possession and the. So you're talking about, you know, chain of liability, we're talking about, not to talk about a person like it's property, but you're talking about who takes possession and the. What's that have to do with?
Who's responsible for the welfare of that child, once it's.
Just at first blush, my guess is, you know, it depends on who's kid, once it's dropped off the hospital, something happens, it's probably the hospital, depending on what's. You know, somebody shuts it in the baby box and I don't know how these work, but the, the child. Dies in the baby box because of something that's defective potentially. Well, I, I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to, just like Carrie, I'll have to look at it, but probably depends on, you know, change of title later.
I'd like to table it.
I can do some more checking too. I mean, I have a couple of names of people from the Safe Haven Baby Box. I could reach out to them and see if a couple of liability.
No, like an open table is the whole mark. But Carrie, Carrie check into it, and then if you would look at the grants like Todd had mentioned.
I know there is a grant out right now that if it is, if this would get approved and it expires May thirty-first, we would get reimbursed ten thousand dollars. If, but I have to show receipts.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So they're going to have to have the receipts before the thirty-first?
Yeah.
Maybe see when the next grant starts too. Maybe if it ends thirty-first, there's a new one starting.
Could be, I don't know, yeah.
Is that, is that through the, the mediocre community block grant? I don't, I'm not familiar with this ten thousand dollar grant, I don't know what it is or where it comes from.
I don't know, maybe Todd just mentioned it there more.
But I know.
Do you know where that comes from?
Well, the one was from the right, right, Indiana Rights of Life.
Okay.
That was one of them. Then there was Northern Indiana Community Foundation, they're the ones to be a ten thousand, like, well. And it looks like the state itself, even they, they budgeted a billion dollars for it.
Was gonna reimburse.
Motion on second, all was in favor.
And so, two things in June, then.
Right.
Sounds good.
We have uh, department updates from Coon's Lake, Hamlet, Washington Fire Department.
Could, could I come up with them?
Sure.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of, kind of initiated it though. Yes, come on, come on up. So the other night, I invited her to Coon's Lake. And discussing one, the EMS service, it's like. I was, I was hoping that Coon's Lake would be here tonight. But I, from what I understand, seventy percent or even more of their calls are not fire, but they're medical.
Coon's Lake.
Coon's Lake, now Dave, I'm glad Dave's on the line because I talked to Dave about this morning. So we gave the EMS an extra position the other day. And that is going to help, Dave, could you help me here? How, how's that gonna help uh, Coon's Lake?
Well, essentially what's been happening is Coon's, Coon's Lake's been driving the ambulance for free. Um, and we, we had a limitation before that you had, we changed it to where you had to be an EMT or above to drive one of our ambulances. And so Mr. Brock came in and asked for approval to have a position where emergency responders could um, could drive the ambulance. Which I, I do have to admit, admit, the emergency responder has nearly the same certification as an EMT. I mean, there's only like two things that. Um, uh, an emergency responder can't do. So basically what Larry was trying to do was make it more lucrative. For those that were driving anyways, uh, to be able to drive the ambulance in that air, uh, area just when we're short, so.
So where is the ambulance stationed at, Dave?
Oh, it's still the same thing. These people would be on staff just like our EMTs. Is Larry still there?
Yeah, yeah.
Am I, just, just chime in if I'm mistaken, Larry, I believe. These people would be staffed just like a regular EMT, but instead, instead of having to be required to be an emerg, an EMT, they could be an emergency responder, but be located at our base and ready to drive when necessary.
So let me make clear why I got it. It looks like it's in my district.
Yes.
And um, so I was quite concerned when I had seen the sign on Medic Five. I'm quite concerned when they're using their equipment. And three-quarters of their calls are medical. So my question. As a councilman and a question to the commissioners, how do we rectify that? So in talking with Dave today, I was not fully understanding the extra pay. So that will go out to these, uh, well, and we got Washington Township is what'd you say, sixty percent of your calls? So a lot of these fire, firemen are going out on calls for medical.
Oh, wait, wait a second, Bruce, sorry, if I could just chime in, this is something separate. The county has never, the county has never had an intention to pay. Townships for medical response, for support. I mean, that's a totally different thing. I'm sorry, I thought you were asking about.
No, no, no.
You mentioned ambulance, you mentioned ambulance supplies. We've always had an agreement with the fire departments that if they use something off their rescue trucks, then we give them, whether it's a non-rebreather. Mask or gloves or whatever, we have actively given them things to replenish what, usually not gloves, but like rebreathers and some of the. You know, things that, that make it more difficult for them to order. We've replaced that in the past and I didn't realize we had changed that practice.
Here, here's my question, Dave. Uh, here's, here's my question, guys.
Some with, yeah, I can't say everybody. I do know some departments we exchange. I wanna say all of them.
Well, I think we're getting off, we're getting off where I wanna go.
Okay.
So I go. I was not here when the EMS was started, but I was darn close.
Okay.
And the EMS service, now I'm going back thirty-plus years, was we never intended for our firemen to go out and make these medical calls. Where had we fallen short and what can we do to correct it? Not, not in the townships, but countywide, because uh, the people are the ones that are getting short.
Okay.
And these guys are getting worked.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and that's, that's not a new. Thing, at least this is not, I don't think it's a first time. There's been many times, it comes and goes, it adds and closes. Now, first responders, that was. What things were designated that before. Um, the first, but designated first responders at these volunteer fire departments were just. Were called out for every medical call and they were, they were run ragged over it and we had. I don't know what the solution wanted to be, but I, you know. That, that got, that got satisfied, but now we're back up to another position where we're. Protect, you know, taxing these volunteers again.
And I think, I think Dave kind of misunderstood me, just real quick, Dave, and then you. I'm not asking for something specific for Oregon or Coon's Lake.
Mm-hmm.
I'm saying that we have this issue throughout the county, whether it's Knox, whether it's Sampeer or whatever. So Dave, now, I'm not talking about sending funds specifically to townships. But taking care of the firemen, the collective firemen of the county.
No, Bruce, Bruce, I was just saying, I misunderstood you. I thought you were talking about the program that Larry was starting to uh, to help the Coon's Lake guys that were driving anyways. Now, let, let me back up, cause people know that I was a volunteer firefighter for a long time, still support volunteer fire. Whoever's trying to make you think, Bruce, that volunteer fire. Isn't expecting and wanting to do, uh, well, some of them don't wanna do the EMS call, some wanna do more, like, for example, Coon's Lake goes on a lot of EMS calls. Some other departments have protocols and only certain calls they go out on. But that said, right now, townships are budgeted for that. I mean, we're not the only county that, that has fire departments mostly running. I mean, some of them are running ninety percent medical calls, like that's. That's known, I mean, if one of the things we wanna start doing with the state is negotiating the way fire departments are funded. Then that's another possibility too. I mean, that's one of the reasons why Hamlet did their fire territory was so they could budget differently, but. Like, this is no epiphany, and I, I'm, I feel a little bit taken back, Bruce, that people are leading you down that path on the volunteer side, like.
And they're not.
Doing that, we've been doing that for a long time, like, it's.
And, and let me make clear, it's not that they don't wanna make these calls. But these men ought to have the ability to spend some time with their families, that the, the volunteers are so short in this county. And a lot of that is simply because of the pay they receive.
And let me.
I don't know a single volunteer that doesn't.
Yeah, I was a volunteer for twenty years.
Firefighter. Reports to me what they wanna be responding to and not. Every fire department.
That's not.
Um, Hamlet. Coon's Lake. Bass Lake, Knox. Sampeer. All agreed that they wanna go on every call.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Certain calls, I didn't say it. Which, Norjetson has a list of what they want. If the fire chief has a choice. They just send me what they wanna go to and then I share that with the people, with the staff.
I'm only wanting to bring a problem forward. Dave, Dave is well aware of it. He, like he says, this isn't, this isn't an epiphany. We need to do something about it.
Mm-hmm.
Our, our EMS service in Stark County, no offense, and that's it, but we need to get aggressive.
Mm-hmm.
And you guys are where it starts.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to overstep my bounds, Dave, but I'm very, very. Um, serious about this. We have an EMS problem in Stark County.
And it needs to be resolved. And it was touched on earlier, I mean, our personnel, our, yeah, it's, it's, it comes down to staffing, I mean, and.
The pay.
My thing is, alright. I may be speaking out of line, but it's not just a Stark County thing, it is a statewide.
Yes.
It's a countrywide thing, right? Nobody wants to volunteer, nobody wants to. Go for all these jobs. When, I don't know what your pay is for EMTs, when you can go to Wendy's and make fifteen bucks an hour, I mean, what are they gonna do? Uh, like I said, I'm not bashing anybody. Uh. Like Bernard said. We're not in it for the money. We're here to help people. So that's what our ultimate goal is.
Mm-hmm.
I understand funding, everything else. We can't, most departments we bill now, we can't double bill for medical costs, unfortunately. Um. But. I will say other departments. What I've heard was, you know. The only thing they have to pay for is fire service, not medical, according to the state. That is what the state tells them they have to do. And I brought up, you know, if that's the case, then accidents are considered medical calls when you file it with NIPR. Which state reporting.
Mm-hmm.
So does that mean we don't do accidents anymore? It's a fine line as to what you want done.
Mm-hmm.
If it was up to me, I can only speak for myself. We'll go on every call because it's all about the community. So.
And Coon's. Again, saying you gotta wore out, but it's not, cause we're sending you out there. No, 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 it's because they are volunteers, it is because it's where their hearts are at, but my golly. Uh, we need to show our appreciation, if not, if not monetarily, but in order in relief. Because these people have families.
Right.
And they need to spend time with their families. And that's all I'm saying is that we need to really take a good look. At how we're servicing Stark County.
It was brought up like when five was down. I know there were some shifts that it was down. Then Coon's Lake, when they went out on a call. They were taking extra long care of the patient because you had to wait for either walking in to show up or Medic Three. And if one of those went out of county with the transfer, then you had to wait for.
So when you, when you go on a call or when Coon's like you're going on a call. Do you take your private vehicles? Do you take a, 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 a fire truck? Do you take, what do you take?
We have a squad, uh.
That works for medical?
It has medical equipment on it, yes. It's gotta be certified through the state.
And Dave enlightened me today that whenever you guys use stuff out of your rig, that it, it gets replaced, is that correct?
You know, if they have, yes. If it's compatible, yes.
So anyway, my, the purpose. My purpose was to bring up and bring attention to the fact that we need to do something in the county. That we need to get with our state representative, Jim, Jim uh, Pressel and Kendall Colt would be more than glad to work with us, I know that.
So.
Anyway, I did what I told. You firemen I do and what you do with it, but now. Your information.
Because, because of the, the staffing issues, you know, my tactic up to this point has been. Just meet. What we're mandated to meet in the state statute, because we're mandated to have an ambulance service. That's not getting the job done now. Um.
Well, we sure have the time, we could really, in the next several months, get our heads together.
Something's gonna have to be done.
It's gonna have to be.
Or someone's gonna.
Well, when you got uh, people, five or six hours to be transferred at the hospital and, 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 and that's not. I don't put that all on the EMS service, but it's a joint venture and we need to start thinking hospital and EMS to get. Would you agree with that, Dave?
No.
You can't hear me. He's covering his face.
I don't, I don't, you know, I, I don't know, it's just, I gotta tell you, Bruce, this has been a discussion we've been having for over twenty-five years. Um, I, I don't know, like, moving forward, if the fire departments. You, you know, if the fire departments are expressing that we're working them too hard, then we need to address that and we need to fatten up our EMS system and the ones that don't wanna run the calls, we can put protocols in place to do that, I mean. Some counties, the uh, the um, law enforcement and EMS work together, some, some counties. You know, the, and cities that have law enforcement, fire and EMS together, I mean. There are ways to do it, you're right, the state people can help us do that, but I mean, if, if, if fire's telling us though that. They want out of the EMS, then we, we need to start, you know, uh, planning for that as well, because this is the first I've been hearing of this.
I think Coon's Lake is in a special situation because some of their firemen are also South Bend firemen, they give them uh. Different credentials, is that correct, Dave?
No.
No.
Uh. Uh, well, you know, it just varies. I, I, you know, I, I think the hard part is, is that normally. Normally we work with the county fire organization, and I just, I don't know, I think right now, I think the best thing to do, maybe Bruce would be to kind of take this offline and have you. Team up with Kenny Fosse, who's the president right now and maybe. Oh, okay, well, um. You know, I, I, like I said, I, I, the thing I have to say about this is this is the way every county runs with volunteer fire. I mean, it's different with the ones that have bigger municipalities or. You know, especially large cities, things like that. St. Joe County, obviously a lot of things pivot through South Bend Fire. But I mean, we've been running Stark County from a medical perspective in a very similar way for a long time. I mean, and it just has to do with lack of volunteers, like Rick said.
Is this a po, problem we can tackle through the LEPC or some other similar committee?
Well, I, I think a lot, you know, a lot of this discussion comes through LEPC, if we could get more participation from the other departments and participation, because we do have some participation from some trustees, but. You know, a, a big problem here is the overlap of county and township government and. Like, if, if the townships do want county government to become more involved in running, you know, the way they spend their money and the way they operate, I mean, the state wants them to do that. Right now, they're kind of separate entities, and so I think this discussion needs to have county fire. It needs to have their oversight, which are their township trustees and mayors and things like that, town managers. I think it's bigger than just a discussion tonight, um.
Yeah, I think part of the issue is too, Dave, I was just talking, Washington Township has a spot for twenty-five firemen and they got fourteen. So I think it, I think it just goes right down the line, whether it's, whether it's EMS or the fire. Uh, departments or whatever, they, they just don't have the staffing that they need and I, I would correct that.
Nobody wants to do it.
Well, I mean, there's a few different ways to correct that, and again, like I said, it's, I don't wanna belabor this meeting tonight, but I mean, there are fire territories. There are, there are possibilities to contract with neighboring fire departments and take the fire budget instead of funding a township department, funding. A budget to have another department run those calls if they're staffed. I mean, there's a lot of different creative ways to do it. If it's not working the way things are currently working, but I think it might be on a, you know, as department basis determining that, I don't know. And again, I know Rick's there, I don't know who else there from fire. I, I think Kenny might be a good one to ask because he's the county uh, fire president. I mean, it, Kenny, do you think everybody wants to get out of EMS? I mean, what, wh-where do you think we stand?
I don't think anybody wants to get out of it. Seems like the departments that we're, we're specifically talking about tonight asked to run those calls when we started this.
Mm-hmm.
Years ago, they asked to run every call.
And they don't have to, right?
And, and we're not required to respond to those.
And I'm not saying that there's people who want to quit, we're trying to, the EMS call, I'm just telling you that they need help.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like they need to, need to schedule, schedule a special working session to address this issue.
Yeah, that's probably the best idea. I, I do want to help the pressures with that too, or, or at least meet with you, Bruce, I mean.
Yeah, let's do it. I mean, I, but. That was their concern up there and I brought it forward and what we do with it from there is. Up to us collectively, so.
But you are right, Mark, the LEPC is a good forum for that, because it, you know, everybody is involved in it that is, you know, part of emergency response and so.
If, hopefully I, I got the acronym or the abbreviation correctly, it's the. Hopefully I'm, I got the acronym or the abbreviation correctly. It's the Local Emergency Planning Committee, right? So that's, that's where that solution should come from. And then, and I know.
And who is that community?
Uh, yeah, the last, last one I attended, we had, we had fire there, we had EMS, we had E M A.
Is there a list of the committee members that we can talk to?
They have a list.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tori should have that.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
And those meetings are still, our public meetings is beyond belief.
Yeah, we need to get more involved.
Hey Charlie, can I bring something up about the whole thing too? My biggest issue right now is that we're closing down Medic Five, or we're running Medic Five with one person on the truck and nobody's letting us know. If we have a major accident or something, we don't know that there's only one ambulance. And it's coming from Knox or it's coming from Judson. Nobody's telling us anything.
That's when, when that situation arises, does, at, at least does dispatch get a notification? I guess.
Need to communicate. This is more than just Oregon Township affected by that. It's Washington and it's stateless.
How do we tell Kuntz Lake where?
We, uh, calling.
We'll make sure we start calling him.
Does that dispatch send it on an act of nine-one-one alert? Dispatch will send it off all the departments and that way it's.
Yeah, make sure that happens like that.
And always flying one ambulance or ambulance service with one person, that's staffing with one person? That's, that's dangerous. One's that one person.
Can it be through the EMS director position? The director would both be able to run the truck.
But when I have multiple positions open, I can't fill them all.
But if you only have one person on there, you're not running the truck, why not?
It may be multiple. I may be includes, I mean, I'm just uncovering. I may be someplace else covering. We are in a state. That's the problem.
We're gonna have to uh, discuss this a little better at its better tone here.
Yeah, again, this will be, this will be further addressed by the L A P C.
Next item is, um, we have coming discussion, Steve Bowler.
We had a meeting set up for the sheriff today on the towing and, uh, well, he didn't come, but he sent us. There's a few deputy there and they came with the same thing they had for the work. I mean, they've taken me completely off to county. And the reason is was because I have a contract with the city. But collision does city and Judson. Our, the city and Hamlet, and since I have a contract in the city, they say I can live off the city. And I shouldn't be able to get any county at all. In fact, from the dollar store forward. And there was an accident right on in front of our lot within five hundred feet. And they called T N T out on eight. And then I talked to, um, collision today and he said he's been having problems too. They've been sending T N T all the way to thirty-nine and they don't know what porters there and he's only two miles from there. And we always try to get there and get stuff done as fast as we can in the area. Was covered by towing services by area. And now it's like to the point where it's, which is the, what the sheriff gives. They didn't find a, they don't, I mean, anywhere on the county at all. Oh, you do? And all I'm trying to do is get, you know, something back with the county and then Wagner's gonna be coming back on now and so you know, that's gonna be changing the whole thing. So we really never got anything done except a few rules from the towing service. And like I said, all I'm trying to do is just keep my business running and collision says the same way. Well, yeah. There's been a lot of calls that they said that he had, that he didn't. And they've been calling saying, hey, you got this car the county said you have it. And it wasn't there, it was somewhere else and somebody else had it. And he was concerned for, he was gonna come tonight, but his sister or somebody had open heart surgery. So I don't think this is something that's gonna be overnight to get it taken care of, but you, it doesn't make any sense to have somebody go all the way across the county and somebody else backyard to tow. Or with my towing service is right there all the time. And that I can't only go on this road that way, that way, you know? I mean, it's all the time.
On this report, this was created from January first, twenty twenty-three. And as of right now, collision had twenty-six, Bowler's had thirty-eight. Howard's had forty, Pit Stop had thirty. T N T had forty-one.
Yeah, and see, this is the thing about the calls, okay? Some of my calls have been a jumpstart, pull the ambulance out. You know, things like that. And the accidents is, is where you make your money. And then you'll see that all the other calls in this county mainly are accidents. And the city I have like an impound or, you know, that, but they have it down there, jumpstart a battery and all that. I mean, the numbers can't are not anything you can say. You, you know, I could have a hundred calls in the city and not make half the money I make in a county because of this, the accidents. And the only way you're gonna afford to run a towing service is to get as many as you can to do it. And I'm not trying to get rich or anything, but you know, when they cut out seventy-five percent of my calls, I mean, and then last year they said I got a hundred in the county. Well, I took fifteen or, or I think it was eighteen of Wagner's didn't answer. Seventeen of, or six or fifteen of collisions didn't answer. Our didn't answer ten. And that was a lot of my business. Now, every year that does the same and you're not gonna get the same amount of calls every year. So you have to have, it's not so much as how many calls you get, as what kind of calls they are.
Well, and looking at this, cause this does break it out, you know, it does list the traffic accidents. And it seems pretty equitable. You've got, you've got four in this period of time, collision got five, T N T got four, Howard's got five and Pit Stop, you got five. So I don't see where the inequity is.
Okay, well, see, I, I, they said I can't do any county at all because I have the city.
But you still got fifteen county calls.
Yeah, but, uh, me, I haven't got any county calls.
Well, then this is not an accurate number.
No, I haven't got any county calls at all, zero. I haven't got any county calls from the county at all. The calls come from the county, but that's from, for the city. I don't know where they got fifteen county calls.
Yeah, but fifteen, fifteen county and it's broken down specifically for you because you've got the
Yeah.
contract with the city. You got twenty-three ci- calls within city limits of Knox and fifteen outside the city.
I haven't got any county called call. I haven't got one.
So this thirty-eight number is not accurate?
Well, the thirty-eight accurate, it might be for the city. I might had thirty-eight, but that's again pounds and then like a one car accident or whatever. But the ones that out in the county are usually like two car accident and that. But yeah, I never got any fifteen in the county. I have got no county calls though. And then just like a collision, you know, I wish he was here because he said the same thing too. He's sitting there two miles from thirty-nine and they're sending somebody all the way over there. And it doesn't make any sense to do it that way. And I mean, they've got, you know, pit stop and, uh, T N T come in and all of a sudden they just give all this. It just doesn't, it, you know, in the towing service, you have to be able to get as many as you can and you can't just keep throwing people in. There's been other people been trying for years to get on the county and they couldn't. Like Bowers and other, and then Wagner. He wanted back on and, and nobody even talked to him about it. And he wants to get back on too. And he, you know.
But that would, I mean, that would split things up even more.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
You know.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, i- if they're gonna be fair for everybody, I shouldn't be excluded because I have a city contract. I, I mean, it, it's just really hard to say that if you get one county call, it can be a two car accident, a three car accident. And then you have a city call, there's gonna be a lot less major wrecks in the city. They're just, you know, basically you have a couple of bad wrecks, but not that much. You're usually zip toe ends or, you know, one car wrecks. Or like I said, you know, jumpstart things like that. And a lot of times when they look down how many calls, a lot of times it was just a tow squad car or they call me and a lot of, and these numbers are a hundred percent, like he said too, that three or four of the cars that people calling said, you got the car. I said, no, we don't. We don't work that. So I don't think these numbers are a hundred percent, but you know, I just can't see being completely taken away from the county when my lot's right here and I got a little arrow that says you can't work in this area because you get so many calls. I mean, that's just like, you know, having a gas station and saying you make a ten thousand dollars this month, you're gonna have to close. You know, you can only get so much. It, it, it doesn't. You know, I mean, why, why would I have, I put my business there because I was in a good area and I put my business in that area. They put their business out there because they wanted that, you know, that's what they do with area. You know, that's just how it is. You, you area you work in, any, any towing service in any town, they've got an area. And if they would have put it on a, nothing else, they put it on a rotary where two trucks can go out. Because I know a lot of times I've heard some of the fire departments say that they'll come out with a couple of trucks and I only need one truck to do a whole accident. And sometimes they're bringing two. I don't know if it's, you know, if they've had that problem, I don't know where they're at or. But, uh, you know, you don't need that many trucks out there and you gotta know what you're doing out there. And I don't think they have enough uh, education or anything to really go out and do, you know, what I've been doing for forty years. I mean, you can't, it'd be a towing service. You just can't go out and learn everything there is to know.
Right now it's still under the sheriff.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying, I know it has to start somewhere and it has to go there. But this isn't enough to keep my business going. And just like collision said, he's gonna have to lay another driving block and he was doing good too. So I wish we could all get with him or whatever we needed to do to go forward with this. But I just wanted to try to, you know, to make a point that here I'm sitting with a truck. You know, if, if nothing else, now I'll give the city contract up and let's just go ahead and make it as a, uh, a rotary and, you know, this area here is the people that have a rotary, you get one, I get one or, you know.
Have you offered that to the sheriff?
Yeah, what's that?
Did you offer that to the sheriff?
He wasn't there today. He didn't show up, you know, say. But I mean, they're gonna have Wagner in there. And I, I have no problem with that. I, I, there's, there is so much more money in the county there isn't in the city. I, I worked real hard to get the city because Randy and I had the city and we were, and just like uh, Pit Stop, he's never met the requirements to tow for the city because you had to have a business in the city, which he does. But he doesn't have a tow lot in the city that they certify. He has, well, I don't even know where his tow lot is. And just like T N T, he wanted to come and tow for the city, but he doesn't live in, in the city. You had to be jurisdiction of the city with a business and have a towing lot in the city limits, you know, jurisdiction of city limits. Because the, the city mayor says he wants the tow lot to not be right in the middle of town. It has to be on the edge. And that's just his rules, not mine. And the only reason why I'm there because Randy passed away and there's nobody else that has that. Well, uh, T N T tried to get in, but they wouldn't let him have the wreck cars in his tow lot or there, because they said they only have so many and not, you don't want wrecks there. So I'm just going by what it, so I'm getting punished for having the tow lot, you know, having what it takes to do it in the city. I have no problem giving that up to get it to where maybe we didn't work it up.
I don't think you're being punished. I think.
No, I know.
Yeah, make it fair.
Yeah, but you know, it comes like, how fair is any business? You know, like you put a dollar store in and if the dollar store does more than the dollar store over here, you know, they should say, well, you're getting way more business because you got a location. We better not let you have it.
But that's, that's not, that's not, the dollar store isn't serving the government, you know, and it's not right for the government to pick winners and losers.
Well, no, I don't think it's right for somebody to take me out of the county because it's gonna make it fair for everybody. I mean, where did it ever come up that you have a business that it should be fair for everybody? I mean, you, you buy it, you get an area, you put your business in, you know.
When it comes to government procurement, yeah, that's, that's the goal is to try and is equity.
Yeah, I know what you might, but you know, to do it right and to do everything the way it should be, not get it done that way. I mean, if collision was here, he'd kinda fill in his part of it too. Cause I'm not that, you know, when I, me speaking and having somebody, what I say, he could have more insight on different things than I say that I miss. But it's just really hard to do it with just, it's how you got thirty-eight calls and they got thirty-eight calls, you know, it doesn't work. I mean, one, one record call might be an accident and sit there for ten days and you get storage and wanting to just be pull it in and tow it out. And a lot of times the city they're called are an impound, they come to get plates and take it out. So that's a record call. That's nothing near an accident. And then now by that, the accident, you know, like he has a body shop or whatever, he gets business from that. And that's what collision says they have a problem with. They're losing all their good collision in there, because that's why they got a towing service to start with. He said he put a hundred fifty grand out for records so he could be able to feed his towing, uh, uh, his body shop. And he's losing that by what's happening to him. So it's harder on me and it's harder on him. And if it was made to be fair, then it should be fair to everybody making a living. That's all I'm trying to say. But I've been doing this for, I think, thirty-eight years and I've never had a problem under four different sheriffs that they could see that you can't put somebody out of business to make it fair for somebody else in a certain way. I mean, I can understand why everybody wants to make it fair.
I don't think the, I mean, under sheriff, I don't think you'd be able to pick and choose, you know, like the amount of the cost of what's, what you're gonna
Yeah.
be paid. I mean, there's still, I think once Jack is back, I think uh, I think he'd probably sit down with you. I would imagine is whoever.
Well, I've been trying for two months to get to sit down with him and he was supposed to be here today and didn't come and they didn't do nothing by handing the same thing that they had a few months ago. In the meantime, there's twenty-seven cars that are towed in accident in the area that I used to have. I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. It's, it's, it's get to the point where it takes a lot out of the business, you know? And then plus a, a business like this, it's just me and it's gonna be my son. I don't have a bunch of employees. And it's lucky I don't have a bunch of employees because it costs a lot to have, you know, trucks and keep them insured for the amount we do. And there's no problem with what I do, how I do it, or my trucks or anything that's legal. And my lots, it's just that, you know, they wanna just make it fair. And I don't think that all the other towing services are meeting a hundred percent of the requirements. I mean, they say they are, but it just seems funny to me, you know, I don't know how they can afford three trucks down here and have insurance on it and have all these drivers. I just don't understand. I mean, you know, I mean, I've been doing it long enough to kinda see it, but maybe I'm wrong, but I'd like to know if we could get everything all on paper and see exactly what everything is. Cause like I know T N T, he wants to meet all the requirements and do it and do it right. He's got good trucks. He's never had any problem with trucks or anything. But, uh, you know, you can't just have somebody jump in there. They have to have insurance. And I said something today about do you have your drivers insured and, and teen, uh, Pit Stop, he just went off on me and I was like, yeah, what do you think I'm stupid? I said, no, I'm just asking a question. And it got heated in there and it was just like, no, I just wanted to just ask a question and how it is. I just, you know, I know what it takes to put another person on the towing. You, you just don't call them up and say, hey, I want this guy. You know, you have to have, you know, fill it out. They have to, you know, get V eighteen or over and they have to have a good driver's license to do that. But you can't just say, hey, go pick my truck up and go tow cars. Too much liability. But.
May I say something real good? Nothing, nothing crazy. Um, all I wanna say is, I mean, obviously I have a lot of trucks. Um, I have eleven forty's. Um, I don't see why you shouldn't be online since all this. I pay probably close to a four hundred plus thousand dollars a year in wages. It might be worth it. We're all from, we spend our money. As far as insurance, I can bring anything you want. I can almost forty thousand dollars a year. And the reason I was able to do that is because I branched my business out. I probably made thirty percent of my gross Stark County. That's the guys I was true. And I bring that money back to Stark County. Now, I understand that you don't have what you have. But I could, you know, for several years and why? I have, like you just said yourself, look at my trucks. I probably got four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand worth of trucks. Why should I not go down and tow? I don't understand why it's, I don't understand. If the calls are people and you say, when we get jumpstarts too, we went out and followed the ambulance system. We went out for a ambulance phone, did chart the thing and I know that would, I would follow it back. I mean. You need to, you need to go outside just before you can't, you're lying in a county like this. And you're just, you have to have everything.
Business, but I'm not getting it because, now another thing too, there's two other towing services that wants to get on. And if we put Wagner back on and you two guys on, there are gonna be two more guys wanting to go on. And you can't put that many people on a area.
I'm sure it's insured and all. Why are they bringing in? It's staggering. You've got experience.
Yeah.
Everything hard is hard to save up. It's like the challenge to that. And I do pay my return, so you know, correct, a lot more than most.
Yeah, well, I do too. I've been here all my life.
I, that's from the, I'm, I'm, you know, really small. Bring back. That's all.
Yeah, that's all. But I, I'm gonna try to get with the other towing, see if we come up with maybe talk to the sheriff. Try to get it to there. But, you know, in the meantime, it's just really putting strain on my business. And I mean, you can make it fair all you want for everything, but you can't take enough piss away from somebody that actually put them out. That's not a goal for anybody in the city. You know, and I think that's my humans too, you know, and I try to do everything I can and there's a lot of people that I tow for. You know, I've been to school and all that and it can, I'm qualified and just like, well, now we're gonna make it fair for everybody. I, I don't know. Okay?
Sir, motion approved payroll claim in the amount of two hundred ninety two thousand, two hundred seventy seven dollars and forty two cents.
Go move the second.
Favor kind of.
He is the speaker.
Motion approved. This paper's claim in the amount of two hundred eighty four thousand, eight hundred ninety eight dollars and thirteen cents. All his favor. So sorry. There's a motion to approve vendor claims in the amount of. Four hundred seventy four thousand, six hundred fifty three dollars and twenty seven. Motion approved the minutes from Monday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty three. In bridge reestablishment.
And you may recall last year, we took that camera down to zero for twenty twenty three, the tax rate. I thought it was the council approved it, but it's not. So you write that approved it, so. I'm trying to reestablish it at the number on two rate, which is zero and so there's one left, zero. Just letting you know, it's in the paper for you guys to either.
Then we have, uh, when that was. Done to the effective rate, then the piece of song down or is that just? That there was enough that fund and we just wanted to build up on the general. So this is just a reallocation of that. Force number percent.
And we have the ARPA money for funding payroll.
Dave, do you wanna talk about that? The ARPA, for the council's own request for. Funding payroll with ARPA for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, so, um, uh, commissioners, uh, what ended up happening was is we've been trying to figure out a way. I mean, there was just that discussion a little bit ago about EMS. There's been previous discussions coming from law enforcement about how far there of a disparity we have. Um, for. Our pay for our employees. So the council has been, you know, throwing around some ideas and and thinking about some different ways to try to pay for. Um, such funding. And so. There were some considerations made, um, for the possibility of, uh, raising taxes, for example, using an in, uh, what used to be an option, uh, option income tax, um. Now is referred to as a local income tax. That was one of the things that was, uh, discussed. And then, um, you know, and then maybe some long term things to build into that to to fill that in. And then, you know, there were some soul searching done by the council and it was, uh, considered, you know, for now. That the way to fund that might be better, uh, well spent looking at the ARPA money, considering, you know, down the road, we've got the solar money and other things that are coming into. Um, uh, income wise into the county. That for now that could get something started for the first couple of years. Um, we're, we're pretty set with cum cap. Um, you know, there there were some other things, you know, some other ways we could work on some of the capital things we need, like the air conditioning in the courthouse and. Some of the more immediate things. And so. Um. The it was decided by the council as opposed to looking at the, um, of the lit tax, um, to fund it with the ARPA money. And it was a ten percent raise, um, across the board for all employees.
And it was for the ten percent raise and then for the shortfall that my fund is having. Which is, we estimated it's gonna be using about a million dollars.
Yes, thank you for that. Sorry. And and as well, that shortfall, which. Right now, there's some discussion of litigation, um, or or litigation legislation. Um, with the our our state colleagues, um, on how to maybe bridge that down the road. Um, it clearly the nine one one tax has not been re been raised in over a decade and. You know, maybe some other possibilities, but for the short term, we're short, um, that hundred and seventy five thousand as well with nine one one.
How I feel about this. This is, it's, are are we looking to amend the salary ordinance this year with this fu- with this money?
We would start, we would start with the raises, um, next year.
I'm not sold on the across the board. Raise. Cause I don't think the. Cause that means, you know, the higher earners, you know, both sports at the top, the end for me of the organization get a. Larger dollar amount. Figure as a raise. And we're still. You know. At the bottom end, we're raising ten percent of. Was it, what are we up to now? Twelve, twelve dollars and are we up to twelve dollars and seventy cents yet?
For what?
For our lowest. Part timers.
Thirteen.
I thought we were still on twelve dollar range.
Thirteen part five, thirteen seven one. That's after their ninety days. They start out with.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's. I'd like to focus more on that because that's. You know, get the targeted ones. Obviously, we need to target. EMS. Um, we have targeted. Highway. Specific positions of highway, driver positions. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have, yeah, we don't have it. Yeah, sheriff's is another one, but we don't have a a shortage of department. No, I can't say that now.
Just if you, I'm just saying now. My girls know that they can go to private sector and make more money than they do there. So.
That's always, that's always the case. Income position.
We're gonna have an issue. There won't be anybody to get your documents in the clerk's office because I won't have anybody.
That's what I thought. It's all more reward and I see your opinion. I mean, yeah, I know, I get, that's just how I'm looking at it, but I, I can, I can be slated.
The council did have a lot of discussion with this and. They did, um, like look back book and that, uh, basically they did ten percent raise for us to board, then it would get us up to par compared to governments, not private. But to other.
We'll take it for a second.
So if you spend a million dollars for the shortfall for next year for two nine one one, you're gonna rate this, um. For long for revenue section, which is where you're a lot of.
No, they will go fast.
Uh, infrastructure and, you know, the other sections.
We gotta have playing by the. It's, yeah, it has to all mean. Basically, I'm sorry. We're watching here from now, right? Department has decided, you know, I really not see that. No. I think that should be us in the council.
All the departments know about them because they were instructed to do their, so. Yeah. Just like.
No, we don't have, I mean, right. Worries me is if. Revenues, I mean, one of the one of the just patients I just heard was, you know. We'll do this with yard funds and then we'll. Have revenues from. These solar projects. Yeah, that won't, that won't be billable until they're operational, which we don't know when that's gonna be. And then. Since it's collected as a tax, it's not another two years after.
Um, so they, how they did the contrast, they're actually best directly for whatever brought in usage, so it doesn't go through tax.
Okay.
It goes to us directly, but you're right. I mean, it's twenty twenty five, if you don't start receiving this old money, the council, they're gonna have to create a lit tax or. Find out some other way to fund what they've already given for twenty twenty four. There's some. And. To put a, um, maybe remind that piece. Just because you're bullying on this, it doesn't mean that. The council still have to go through budget workshop. They still have to approve the salary order. I mean, they, they're still have to decide on each every position and how much that position is gonna be. Based on. As far as.
I mean, it's good for the employees. Sheriff's Department too. There's a motion to approve the money, the money in the payroll.
Just so Mitch know. Uh, we've got a park board member resigned, as you said, if he was a Republican appointment, then we're looking for a Republican appointment to replace.
I'd like to recommend Bernadette. She lives in, she has property in Coons Lake. Just saying.
Give that some thought, Bernadette. On the park board, if you want us. We need a Republican, we need a, we've got an open spot, a Republican on the park board.
We should hurt you bad.
You can take your time.
Um, I'll do it.
Bernadette to the park. There we go. Have fun. Have fun. Uh, thank you. Hands up.
We're gonna let Justin.
I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if that was. They aren't right now, just there. So what the alleged, the statute doesn't allow. But it does allow for it. Well, I don't know. Because it is, it may. Not right now, but it. If the framework is there for it to be. Look into that system. Right, well, we gotta figure out if it's, if it is. And there's any sheriff department that talks about. I thought. First, we need to go and change the. New library, the sheriff's department that had not been to the academy. If they pay back their staff, if they quit.
Well, that was, um, I didn't question that first of all. We are not allowed to.
And so we had to do to the murder.
They probably, yeah. Um, yeah. I did ask her about that. Because the highway has a procedure suit where like if they pay for their C E L to use stuff, not a lot of it. It's, it was.
It's the interest. So far.
I'm just asking if you guys have any questions. I don't want to rude tonight. Wait till you make fifteen. I know. We're back from forty six pages to seventy.
Right here, insomnia.
The last thing that I have, promise. My office has seven computers right now. Um. Two of them I purchased out of my own budget last year. Five of them was replaced into a eight boom. Maintenance director and Richard came to me with a proposal that the maintenance computers are way, way older. And they don't need them to be as upper far as my office does. So they're wondering if. I get two new computers for my office, but then they take. The newer one that I have and it's like. And then the quote is. One thousand, seven ninety eight, thirty eight, thirty two.
Just pan for it.
I'd like to. If this is only for the computers, I don't need the monitors, um, and I don't know if maintenance does not, but those are pretty, uh. Less inexpensive, so they may be able to, they may be able to find some of that data. Yeah, yeah.
You motion.
Second on the paper. Anyone else? Anyone else have anything for us?
Yes, at the last meeting, uh, last month, I asked. You guys wanted to consider or had. Thought about considering a cap on the solar acres and you were gonna have, or you still look into it. I just wondered.
We did look into it. We got an update on that. Recently. But I don't remember all, you you sent quite the like the email out. Uh, and so I don't remember all the details in it, but just I got was. It's, 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 it's an area we need to tread carefully and it's.
Yeah, um, it's probably doable, but you need to do a lot of legwork before you can put a cap on solar acreage.
What about a moratorium? Because I was finding that the two words were used, um. Synonymously in all the literature I was reading, newspaper articles, they would refer to it as a cap, but then like Noble County, it was actually a one year moratorium that could be renewed. And their cap was only four thousand, seven hundred acres, which is only like two percent of their.
Same kind of thing. You wanna look at what your goal is behind a moratorium, um, moratoriums. As the name kind of suggests, is to put a pause on something for the time being until something else can be figured out. So you can use one conjunction with the other. Is my understanding, um. The literature that you sent me from Illinois. Concerned accounting, and I think I said that in my email. That was, didn't have planning procedures in place. They said, we don't have the capacity to handle this right now. We need to look into our. Into. Zoning, planning, everything else. They put a moratorium on it for the purpose of trying to figure out what kind of boundaries they needed to set. So, you know, moratorium. Again, whatever your end goal is there, you just need to keep in mind what your end goal is, you know, if it's moratorium is being used in place of prohibition, that's different than a moratorium. Do you put an acreage cap on something? You know, one thing that I did mention is obviously there is at least one solar developer. Larry kind of works with, who's been in active communication and working in the county now for a long time. Any type of moratorium, there probably would need to be a carve out for a company like that who has a good faith and working with us. Because there's probably a reliance argument to be made. There are a lot of those stuff, again, I sent in an email because it's. Attorney client privilege, but you know, since it's brought up in a meeting, I'll answer that question. We just. It's probably possible because there's not a lot out there yet because solar is such a new thing in Indiana. If it's not prohibited by local government, it's, you can do it. Part of the benefits of working under home rule, but. Again, you need to tie it to something because if we just say, if we just want arbitrarily say fifteen thousand acres in their cap and we're challenged on that. We need to be able to say this is why we said fifteen thousand acres as the cap and what you've done is probably. Hiring a professional, whether that's engineers, uh. hiring a professional, whether that's engineers, uh, agricultural specialist, you know, whatever that is to come in and say, hey, this is what your cap should be for reasons X, Y, and Z, and tie it to that audio study. You know, just saying fifteen thousand is, you know, just like anything else, you kind of walk that fine line to just saying, you know, we're arbitrarily say fifteen thousand is our figure. So probably can be done, but there needs to be a good amount of legwork to happen, if you wanna, like, um, Cassie suggests, you wanna do a moratorium in conjunction with, you know, maybe have a carve out for active solar developers, with the idea of working toward the solar cap, you can do that, it's just, I mean, this is, it's a, it's a big discussion, right, it was a big discussion leading up to your guys' approval of solar, which was before I got here. So it's kind of hard for me to step into it now and go back three years and figure out why you guys, you know, so.
That was, that was kind of my thing before, you know, there was so much being done with solar. You know, nobody had the time to just, you know, look at stuff better, and it's just like, you don't dunk that ones, you know, it's kind of what's, just randomly thinking about this, you know, cap or whatever, you know, just, I mean, if that cap could be like, you know, if it needs be, if you know, more, say a lawsuit, or, you know, something coming at us, that we need to readjust that. You know, in the end, that would be possible too on that cap, probably.
I had actually spoken, I'm.
That's right, I, yeah, I guess the moratorium, you know, when I say cap, it's like a pause button, you know, because we have no idea where this is at, we have no idea, everybody, you know, we got a lot of officials that thinks that this is gonna be our saving grace for monetarily in this county, we don't know that, and we don't know that it won't. But if we put a year, two year, five year, if this is fine now, if this is fantastic now, it would be fantastic five years. And we have, I was here, you guys know this, I don't wanna get in, two years ago, year and a half, two years ago, in August, whatever, in twenty one, and I said, man, this is gonna get out of control, and you need to do something, and we were at forty five hundred acres. I, I, I said then, you remember, I said, you're gonna end up having the, the amount of acres of a township, and this is before it's over. And you were at forty five hundred acres and, and Lisa said, no, no, forty five hundred acres, she called me a couple days later, because she talked to a solar guy and said, we couldn't even sell the kind of electric you're talking about. Acres and stuff like that. We're now at fifteen thousand, so, and, and I have said, and I, and I, I really wish you guys would consider this. I don't think there's anything unconstitutional about saying that these solar companies have got to report when these farms get leased. They have to report that to a government agency, so that you know, you don't have to report the terms of the contract, like you were saying last night, the terms of the contract, that's between two people. But the fact that it's affecting your infrastructure, you have roads, it affects everything, so it affects the infrastructure, and you could say, we gotta know where this is going, we gotta know where it's at, and how many acres are, are potentially five years, because some of this ground is being leased, could be five years in development down the road. But you don't even know what those acres are and what's out there. And now I'm hearing in San Pierre, they bought some ground.
I think four hundred south, there's one going in, I think Clarence.
Yeah, it's, that's under construction, but that's been one of the projects, and it's not a construction now, but, I, that's all I'm saying, as I just, this bothers me, uh, apparently, not that many other people. This bulldozing into this and just grossing ahead, I realize it's between two private people, the, the landlords have to agree to it, but it still affects the whole county, the infrastructure and everything else as yours go on down the line.
Talk about the solar money, which is great, you know, I, I came onto the council being really excited about the money we're getting from the solar, projects, but I guess a question I have, and I'm sure I'll get an answer soon here at one point, is what kind of money is the county getting from people, like not single out Clarence, she's a pretty good guy. But you know, the, the smaller farmers that are now running like two hundred acres or whatever to these places, I don't know how, what the acreage is Clarence is running. But the way I even found out about it is Lori's friend lives in that house, the Don girl who used to live in that Clarence, uh, had given Don. And all of a sudden, they start roping stuff off, and she's totally blindsided. And I mean, that's the kind of thing I'm looking at with the people that are on our, Charlie, my side of the county is, you're going about your business, and all of a sudden you have dozers and ropes and stuff going in like right next to you. And that's what I'm hearing.
Property, and if it's considered agricultural through the state, what makes you so special to tell them what they can and can't do with their life?
Same thing that makes it special enough to tell them.
It, it can only go on agriculture.
Well, that's a, that's in our ordinance.
That's right.
Yes.
Fifteen thousand acres of hard farms, I think it's.
Right, the, the county, the government zones all the time and puts regulation, and you know, I don't see solar farm, the only difference we have with solar farms is, they don't stink, uh, like hog farms, but there's a lot of other differences I can see. But it's the same o- overarching principle, it's like, some people are gonna benefit. My question is, what is the count, how is the county gonna benefit from these smaller scale ones that are on private property, um, not the Mammoth projects, and maybe I'm wrong, the Mammoth project is mainly the one we're getting the one point five million dollars from.
No, that's, that's actually not true, we're getting a million dollars from Mammoth, a million dollars from Mammoth and five hundred from Nextera in their first phase. But if I, since I, since I jumped in there, sorry Cassie, but I just wanted to make sure the numbers are right, we're, we're getting a pretty lucrative amount from Nextera also, but, I, I think this is a stretch here, though, that we're putting this much into one guy coming into a meeting and, and, you know, as a self-proclaimed, uh, proclaimed expert. When there's a lot at play here, and I mean, the fact that he's talking about the infrastructure and everything else, we have a road use agreement, where things are gonna be repaired when this is all said and done, so I think, I just wanna be careful how much we put on the record that, it isn't necessarily true, and there's just a lot more to address here than just tonight's meeting. I mean, there was a lot of thought put in this, there was a lot of work building up to this, um, that, you know, some of this, just what I'm hearing is just not true, I, I just, I have to say.
And I didn't say I would.
I'm not sure what, what anybody's represented that isn't true, because, you know, I have been looking into this extensively now, we're not, near to the point that you guys were all looking into it before I was ever elected, but, you know, I, I came into this whole thing like, pretty gung ho solar, but then I started listening to my constituents, and not just one or two, a lot. And people, I, I began to see that they are rightfully concerned about, I guess you could just call it the, you know, um, just the, the rush to put this in, not, I'm not upset or, you know, saying that we shouldn't have done what's already been done, but just to let it continue, unabridged without some reflection, and I think, I felt like that's what a moratorium could do, is provide some breathing room, for everybody on governing bodies to figure out if this is something, you, that we need to, to rein in a little bit, or to put temporary hold and then let it continue, but, um, when Justin also said that it's a pretty new area, well, I guess it is, but, you know, in just, in a short time of looking up newspaper articles from different communities in Indiana, I found six counties that have already put moratorium in place, and I actually made a list of them. Let's see. Counties, or that, that were looking at them, uh, or had done them, Decal, Whitley, Noble, Delaware, and Madison. Those were the ones, those were the only the ones I got to, like, in one day of looking at newspaper research, and then I called the folks up at Noble County. And you know, they're hardly a bastion of liberalism in Noble County, so, but they didn't have a problem putting a moratorium in place, can, and putting, you know, once their amount of acreage hit like two percent. So, um.
And we're way above that now.
Yeah, we're way, we're at twelve approximately.
Randy, do any of these leases get recorded in your office?
A memorandum of lease, uh, with the parcel numbers.
I wanted to bring up, because there was a little bit about infrastructure, and I know, well, Dan, I forgot all the about. It's coming back from Teff on seven hundred and Stark County side, I guess, they totally destroyed that road over there.
It's destroyed, Charlie.
What is?
On seven hundred south coming back, well, I had, um, Chad from, San Pierre Fire, he called me about it, and then Dan knew about it right away in one morning. But they completely destroyed seven hundred south over by San Pierre. So they were supposed to get it fixed, I don't know if they have or not. But he did. And that was in the road use agreement, or so they got so much time to get it fixed, so, I haven't been that way to look. But I just mean, it's stuff like that, you know, why did they run on that road again, so.
And I, I also, uh, printed an article and forwarded it to few people from, it, maybe, it's not a research, um, doc of publication, it's not like a scholarly article, but it was from Popular Mechanics, about the infrastructure damage that the solar farms are doing, and how the, um, putting some of them in have caused such like drainage and water issues that there were federal violations of the Clean Water Act. So I mean, yeah, it's those sorts of things that I just feel like, call out for somewhat of a break, at least to be put on this, for the brakes to be pumped a little.
Larry, I can say one thing, there is, you know, there is financial benefit to the county, and it, there is financial benefit to the landlord that, that lived there on that, on that land. The comment that, that this is gonna be going on and on forever is, is not, I don't think accurate. Thing is, there's a certain amount of capacity in the grid, and there, there's solar farms going up all over the place, you know, they're still putting up wind farms. There's gonna come a point fairly soon, that there's not gonna be a place for people to get on the grid. There's always so much capacity, when we start hitting that, it all stops. So I'm just saying, if we put it off for a long period of time, there'll be no further development in the county.
And that's, and that's for the projects that survive the wait time in the queue, to connect to the grid.
I was, I was curious too, and I'm not sure if any of these, um, the folks, you know, selling this to different M P's around the country, had mentioned that they find Indiana so attractive because two grids happen to come together in our area. Because one of my questions is, why aren't they doing this out in the desert where nobody cares, you know, and we don't have.
It's because of what's in Reynolds, you know.
It's the fact that we have two grids that come together.
Yeah, there's a lot of capacity, the one, the one line runs across the county here east and west, it comes from Wheatfield. There's gonna be a lot of capacity in that when they close down the, the coal plant there at Wheatfield. So that's one, and they put the, the new, um, Nipco line in four or five years ago, we sold the one that runs kind of north and, and north, northeast. There's two lines right there, one of those is, is in the MISO grid, and the other is the, uh, J P M. I believe you have, you have the other three P, and that's the two entities that, that, uh, Cassie was talking about. There, those are two of the reasons why they come to Indiana, the capacity and the fact that you've got two interconnection companies that you can deal with. Um, another thing is, it's relatively flat land. And, and if you go out, if you go out, you know, out to the far western reaches of the country, you don't have the electric lines running through there like you do here. You have a lot of lines.
Can I kind of bring it forward, sir? So, again, just, I, I'm not advocating for or against solar, I represent units of government that are very against solar, so when I'm sitting in that meeting, I'm paid to be an advocate against solar, but all I'm telling you is, figure out what your framework is, is your concern aesthetic, is it environmental, is it, and then, and then if it's, you know, a moratorium, which again, I said, you, can probably do, um, I don't know if any of those moratoriums that she'd mentioned had been challenged, that weren't being challenged, I don't know, but decide what your framework is, is if it's, I don't like the look of these things, then maybe that's your framework, if it's, I don't like the environmental side of things, and you probably need to engage somebody to figure out what the environmental impact is, or maybe the studies are out there. So again, it's just to say that if you're going to, at this point, when it's not a permitted exception for the gentleman that said fifteen thousand recorded acres now, now you pull that from people that were actively soliciting this, I'm not saying you can't do it, but you need to have some basis, you need to try to tailor that to some type of, again, is it environmental, is it aesthetic, that's all I'm saying, not advocating for it, not advocating against it. But I wouldn't be doing my job from a legal perspective, I didn't say you need to have some idea of what direction you're headed and when, you've already had it as a permitted exception before, because if you're gonna pull something that was a permitted exception before, and you were challenged on that, if I'm gonna argue on your behalf in court against it, which I will do, as you hire me to do, I need to be able to say, this is why we decided to do it. So moratoriums, yeah, probably can do it, um, acreage caps probably can do it, because there's not a statute out there that says that you can't, or a ruling, but, decide why that is, do your legwork, that, that's all I'm saying, figure out your framework, follow that framework, and you have a better chance of justifying that if it's challenging.
Two more things?
Um, auction stuff, do you want me to get around with the departments, get that going, and do you want still online, and you wanna still go with the one that did the lot?
Oh, I'd say online, like it wasn't most last time, I seen, I seen them do the bags. Yeah, they're just online.
Actually, we're talking.
I checked with that one and then, uh, stingy out of. I don't know how to pronounce it, I know, as far as spelling goes, it starts with an L. I checked just to see if the, like, they charged it for.
And maybe just see how closely they're being ready.
The other one was have a words law too, right? Um, and, but I've done this, but I've been asked if one of you, can talk to the extension. There's, I guess, one office that they have telling for someone that doesn't come in, so that office.
Well, I mean, there's, there's an office that the park board was, is park's board still using that office?
Yes.
Maybe E M A was using it. Yeah, the problem is, if it's E M A. I stick her in a basement. But I have no problem calling back to my space, you know. Yeah, then that's how we ready access.
Speaking of the warehouse, I was told that, um, in the back row for city of the honest, for their horse stuff, now you guys aren't down on warehouse.
Hey, hey, Charlie, Charlie?
Yeah, Dave.
Um, we, we went over there with the sheriff, we, we've been, um, kind of working with, uh, between the sheriff's department and city court, to try to see where, she has working files, which, um, Jack Rose is making room for, and some of the, so, like, like, in between working and non-working files, but we did go over to the, um, uh, to storage at the glove factory. Uh, Tony Milice was there too, and we did see that if, there, there's a lot of room for consolidation there. But there's just a lot of junk there, there's some good junk too, that could probably earn the county some money in an auction. There's some nice benches over there that, um, there was some discussion of the inmates possibly restoring them and putting them around the county. But there's just, there's a lot of wasted space right now, but we do need some space to be able to store those, um, documents, uh, with city court. And there's, there's just a lot of cleanup people can do, there's.
That, there's city records. Right?
Court is connected with our report now.
Yes.
It has their.
But.
If she doesn't, she had, the city's not gonna store her records, and the city can't, because she has to have access to it.
Yes.
Well, we've, we, the only space we've designated for them is out at Justice Center. And if that space isn't sufficient, we need to reexamine the agreement.
Technically, those are our records, though, I mean.
How many is there, Dave, do you know?
Um, you know, probably like one, if I had to do like square footage, I would say probably like, less than a hundred square feet. I mean, it's not, it's not a ton, it's a decent amount, but I mean, one, one really decent sized shelf, or some space on the existing shelves would suffice, but I don't know if you guys have been over there lately, I mean, there's.
I haven't been lately, no.
There's a lot of junk there, there's a lot of stuff.
Organized, the records need to be organized over there.
There's, and there's more that I'm sure that can be, you know, by statute, can be probably destroyed too.
So Rick does need to work with finding space out there.
Yeah, it's all there.
And and city, just so you guys know, city court isn't requesting some kind of ultra secure, like build out and everything like that, like it can be stored on shelves like the other documents that are out there now.
But I told him to junk stuff, but like Dave said, make sure like the benches and that kind of stuff he don't, so we can redo them.
Some of that furniture too, guys, is just in really bad shape too, that like.
I'd like to see that one desk. What old desk? Oh, okay.
Can I make a request? Um, one of the old typewriters with the large deck for our books is in there. Is there any way we can bring that to the annex so I can put it in my office?
Yeah, yeah. For Nate and Rick to get it over here.
That's a part of history, I don't want it to go away.
Right, is anyone else sending it for us?